We're trying to go somewhere, let them know that because these guys had to go all the way around the cops for a while, so it's turned the entire county. With that, we will call the, call them eight fourteen, South Walton, tourist development and we have a quorum, in fact, I think everyone is here today. We'll start with the 2013, 2014 proposed budget. And as you can remember, last time, we did not approve that budget. And that's why it's on the agenda this time. So it's up for a vote today. And Stan Sunday, the interim TDC director, will give you an update on the budget.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Council. In front of you, you have our 2013, 14 fiscal year proposed budget. Essentially, it is the same that came before you at the last advisory council meeting with one change, and that change being for removed four FTEs and instead putting some money for contractual labor during the summer season.
Right, I think Dave's sales operation, they had asked for four additional people, and they've kind of gone back on that and decided that what they would like to do is get four part-time people just for the summer season. And so it'll be contractual labor, and so there'll be, I think, what, four positions during the summer? So if anyone knows anyone who wants to work for the summer, please contact Stan.
We actually budgeted enough, Commissioner or Madam Chair, to be able to provide labor based on demand.
Okay.
In other words, if we need more during spring break, or more during Fourth of July, or Memorial Day, we can, we can hire them accordingly.
Okay, good, good. And I think Tim raised his hand, he's looking for summer, summer work, I think. Do we have any questions on the budget? Like you said, it's basically what we looked at before with a few tweaks here and there. We looked at it, we had, we had several people from the Institute of Senior Professionals look at it and meet with TDC and went over a lot of the different specifics on it. And does anybody have any questions or comments?
I've got a couple of questions, Ms. Meadows.
Okay, sure.
Under new product, and this is probably my being naive.
Okay.
Under new product, it says other cost administration transfer, I think it says ex FDR for sixty-five thousand, what is that?
Okay, let me see, you're on...
On page three, about eight, nine items down, sixty-five thousand. And nothing was budgeted last year.
Oh, I see, okay. That can be explained by Michelle. Right. She explained it to me, and I'll let her, I'll let her go over that with you.
That's the administrative transfer out of each penny, the finance transfers over to administration to cover the costs to manage those pennies. So for new product, shoulder season, emerging markets, there's a percentage of the money brought back into administration where all the payroll and everything's captured in the first two pennies. So it's just a, and we, so we take the sixty-five, add it back to the first two pennies so we can balance the budget.
All right, why wasn't it in last year's, or was it?
It wasn't budgeted last year, but the transfer's been done. It's something that we've discovered that we should have been doing all along.
Okay.
And so, right now, he, they've done the transfer, but it wasn't included in the budget, so it makes sense to include it moving forward.
That makes sense. What Turbine said, it was not there last year.
Yes, sir.
The other question that I had is on beach maintenance, page four. The second item is contracted services going from fourteen thousand to three hundred and fifty thousand, is that bike path maintenance?
Yes.
Okay. And then the second to the last item, also on page four, improvements other than buildings much from thirty-two thousand to a million five eighty-four. And I just, I'm not sure what that is, because it says improvements other than buildings.
Which page are you on?
He's on page four.
Same page, page four, second to the last item from the bottom, Stan.
Michelle, you want to, do you want to go over that too?
Michelle, you want to stay up there?
Yeah, these are things that we, we talked about, because I had a lot of the same questions.
Yeah, I wanted some clarity.
No, go ahead, go ahead.
In this proposed budget is a one point three five seven million dollar transfer from reserves. That's to cover the capital improvements for the bike path and the bridge, and that's where that money is in the line item.
Okay, all right. That's all questions for us, Ms. Meadows.
Okay. Does anyone else have any questions or comments on the budget? Do we take public comment on the, on the budget? Is that something that we've done before that we want to do?
It's to the Chair's discretion.
Okay.
If you'd like to accept it now, or otherwise, it's not technically a public hearing, you can involve those, but there's no reason why we cannot accept it.
Yeah, okay. Does anyone have, in the audience, have any questions on the budget or comments on the budget? I know Mr. Art Miller is here, and he was one of the ones who went through it with a fine-tooth comb, and we're very grateful for that as well. So there being no questions, I'll entertain...
I'll do a motion to approve.
A motion, okay. There's a motion to approve.
A second.
Second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Okay.
Ms. Meadows, can I just ask one other question?
Sure.
I know this is, I know it's not on the agenda, but it's something I'd like to just bring up since.
Mm-hmm.
The TDC has taken on a one point three four seven million dollar responsibility that in the past has been carried by the county.
Yes.
And as County Commissioner, I would ask you to, maybe at the next County Commissioners meeting or when it's convenient, I got a call from Domenica at Waste Management.
Yes.
And you know, one of my pet peeves over the last twenty-five years has been garbage. And it's still an issue, it has not gone away. And by taking on this responsibility, I would ask that possibly you and the County Commissioners could look at a way of getting some weekend help on garbage collection.
Okay.
We can do everything right, but right now, it's the weakest link in the chain. And if you visit any neighborhood on the weekends, it is, it's just atrocious. And then, of course, the rat problem that goes with it, the health issues to go with it, so with us taking on this additional responsibility, I'm just asking if that's a feasible thing for the County Commissioners to take a look at to give us some help on that.
Yeah.
And I think that's an industry issue, not just a Richard Boltman issue.
It is, it is, and it's an issue that we've looked at before about, you know, the checkout is Saturday, and then, you know, the garbage collectors don't typically come until Monday in some areas.
Or Tuesday.
In some areas, it's Tuesday, so the garbage sits out there. We've looked, we've, we've studied that, we've looked at it, but I think it's definitely merits looking at again. I know they're coming today to the BCC meeting, we're going to institute, if the BCC votes for it, a pilot recycling program for two thousand houses in the South Walton area for, for a year. And so, we're definitely looking at that, so we can certainly talk about the garbage during that conversation.
Like I said, I talked, Domenica called me, I did not call her.
Okay.
And she said, she is still striving, so maybe a conversation with them would be helpful.
Yeah, we've, yeah, we've looked at it, and maybe what happens is during, during the high season, you know, we have someone come in on Saturday afternoon and pick up...
And she seemed, she seemed to be receptive to that.
Okay.
Just a matter of figuring out how to do it.
You know, if you could just urge them to follow their contract, that would be great. I know the year before last, from June, July first to the eighth, they did not pick up garbage along Green Alley, and right on down thirty-eighth, from the first to the eighth of July.
Okay.
It was cats were in it, it was all over the sides of the highways. I called up and asked her where her office was and told her I was going to bring mine and stuff to her office if she couldn't find somebody to come. It was terrible.
Yeah, what was her, what was...
And you call them and they'll tell you, it's Tuesday, Thursday pickup, or Monday, Wednesday, but they're never sure. And so, if they can get their day set and stoned for June, July, the rest of the year, you know this little hole in them, but we sure need to look good with our guests.
Oh, yeah, what did, what did they say? What was their comment when you asked them where they were, July first to the eighth?
They, they weren't sure, they had to ask someone, someone new.
Oh, okay.
And so, it, it, it just, they finally, you know, got someone out there. Last year, they couldn't tell you which two days of the week that they did pick up, but they, they'll, June, July is just rough to pick up one day a week. They'll miss a Thursday, or a Monday, or if they'll just follow, you know, June, July, you know, they'll, we'll get along a lot better if they'll take care of June, July especially.
Okay, okay. Well, we will certainly take a look at that and talk about it at the board meetings.
Appreciate it, Ms. Meadows.
Sure. Item B, two thousand thirteen, fourteen media and co-op plan, and that's John Irvin. We have a presentation by John Irvin and Jeff Zinder.
And we have the most in-depth folks with us, County Rep Jennifer Benino and Kate London. Handles all the media buying, and so they're going to walk us through today.
Okay, thank you. Hi there, I'm Jennifer Benino, I am the Director of Client Services with Zinder, and I want to thank you for the opportunity to be here today. We're excited to present the 2013, 14 media plan to you. Quickly, what we'll go through is just a quick recap of our mission, which obviously has guided our efforts in building this plan. We'll cover two sort of core marketing focuses, and then I'll turn it over to Kate and let her walk you through the media plan. So anytime that we start a marketing plan, a media plan, it's important for us to step back and ask ourselves, why are we here? What are we trying to accomplish? And that's really reflective of looking at your mission, and certainly pulling out those core things that will drive the foundation of this plan. And certainly, that is strengthening the position of the brand in the marketplace, driving the tourism economy of Walton County, and reinforcing an unmatched quality destination experience that no one else can offer. You've got your sixteen beach neighborhoods, you've got experiences beyond the beach, and certainly a quality affluent visitor. From a marketing focus standpoint, our first tenet is really described very simply, and that is, our goal is to ultimately drive awareness to South Walton. That awareness is then going to drive interest among our new visitors as well as repeat visitors, and ultimately, that drives demand. Now, that's a twofold approach, because certainly in our slower shoulder season time period, that demand helps us to be able to drive occupancy. In the peak season, when we're busier, that demand will allow us, or our bed tax collectors, to charge a higher rate, which ultimately will increase your revenues without increasing occupancy. And overall, it helps us to maintain that quality visitor and that quality of life that certainly will want to preserve in South Walton. And secondly, everything that we've been doing when we look at this plan is to continue to focus on shoulder season, because we have heard from you all and others in the industry that that is certainly where we need some help. So you'll see that in the plan that Kate will present, you'll see increased media dollars, events, and other opportunities that continue to support shoulder season when we need it
As Jen told you guys, I'm Kate London, and I'm Media Supervisor at Zinder Communications. I'm going to go through the rest of the media plan, starting with our target markets that were, you know, discussed during our strategic planning period, and those are illustrated above, both with core and emerging, and then those that we consider both core and emerging Our target audience, again, illustrated here and emphasized throughout the whole media plan, is those adults thirty-five to sixty-four with household incomes one hundred and fifty thousand or plus, you know, or more, that are college educated. And again, you know, we try to do female skew as well. Goals and objectives for this year, Jen, you know, pointed out some of those with our focus, but it's to garner awareness and interest of South Walton as the destination, drive new and repeat visitation from our target markets, both core and emerging, support the sustainability of Walton County economy through tourism, and then grow and maintain strong leads for both South Walton and our partners, and then to drive quality traffic to the Visit South Walton website. Now I'll go through each medium, and the first would be print. Our planning considerations for print this year, you know, we always try to look at what those top lead generators are, you know, we've looked at historical print, you know, insertions that we've done, and we are, again, trying to do, you know, those that have produced the top leads for us. The reach of the affluent target audience, circulation in our target markets, relevant editorial around Florida, Northwest Florida, and Gulf Coast Escapes, which you'll see later. Editorial opportunities, anytime we have an opportunity to be in a publication beyond just a print insertion is also one consideration, and then strong added value opportunities as well. Metrics, you know, we always try to measure, how can we, how can we figure out if this campaign succeeded? And with print, we have chosen, you know, lead generation, as mentioned before, and then brand awareness, how did it help increase brand awareness of South Walton? Now I'll go through each of the print, you know, recommendations, the first being Oprah Magazine, it was a top lead generator in 2012, so it was included. It's also a Visit Florida partner. Better Homes and Gardens, National CIRC with Gulf Coast Escapes issue recommend, recommended. And then Southern Living, I was able to get, for the same cost that we've done in the past years, increased circulation of other markets such as Texas, Tennessee, and Mississippi, and then added value opportunity with Sweepstakes, you know, both online and in print. Again, you know, continuing with the co-op leisure, Coastal Living, the Visit Florida section is then travel and leisure and food and wine, it's a combo buy with American Express across two months, just great publications, both upscale and reach of our target audience. And then Conde Nast Traveler with the Florida Escapes travel issue, and then an editorial around South Walton. This is a new recommendation this year that we've been in these publications in the past, but with this buy particularly, we're able to be in these four top luxury magazines for basically the cost of one, and all of our, some of, well, not all of our target markets, but the majority of them. And we're able to do customized reader service cards in this publication as well. Food Network Magazine, again, national circulation, and we're able to be in the May travel issue. And added value is, we're able to be included in their Food Network Magazine's New York City food truck event that's taking place in May surrounding this issue. So just, again, added exposure there. Co-op weddings print is, you know, again, both of these publications with Martha Stewart weddings and with the bridal guides, honeymoon and destination wedding guide, both were just really strong lead generators in past years, so they're both, again, recommended, recommended. Our co-op meetings print, this year, we're able to do more than ever, so these are the recommended publications, and instead of listing them all out, I basically just wanted to list the criteria in which they were chosen. They have, they have distribution at key trade shows and sales mission events, targeted circulation to meeting planners that are planning meetings in the South. They're not just planning meetings across the country, they're very targeted to the South and to Florida. They'll have relevant, or they'll be in issues with relevant editorial surrounding the Southeast and Florida. And then, again, some of these are strong lead generators for us as well. Brand leisure print, Garden and Gun, just a great reach of our affluent audience, Oxford American, it's a publication that is centered around Southern cultural editorial, and it's, it's a great publication for us just because of the target geographies it goes to, as well as the audience. Cooking Light, again, a publication we've been in the past, and we're recommending the Culinary Adventures editorial issue. And then, again, Southwest Spirit is just a great reach of our target audience, both core and emerging. Regional print, brand print, we'll have a family travel insert in all of these publications for a very reduced price, and it's in a lot of our, you know, target markets for, in a great reach of our affluent audience. It's just very cost efficient, so this is also recommended. And I'm sure you can recognize a lot of these names that we've been in in the past as well. Again, more regional brand print with Florida travel and life, it's very brand applicable. And then Texas Monthly has an immense reach of our Texas audience, and it's a Visit Florida Online, we'll go through next. And the planning considerations here are that, you know, we're choosing websites that have a high historical click-through rate, it's targeted to our upscale affluent audience within our target markets, low cost per click, and you can target by behavior as well as interest, so we would target those interested in arts and culture, lifestyle, family vacations, you know, things such as that. And then fighting for co-op campaigns and brand campaigns would also be a consideration as well. Metrics for success, these would be, you know, the amount of banner ad impressions and clicks we receive for South Walton as well as our partners, traffic to the website and to our co-op partner listings, requests for visitor guides online, which we measure through conversions, and then engagement with our rich media such as video banner ads and social media platforms, we can actually measure and see how people are interacting with the video ad, where they're watching it through, things like that. Downloads of the app, and then likes to our Facebook page. Here's some examples of our top performing websites, as we've mentioned before, through the strategic planning process, Weather Channel, Weather Bug are some of our top websites, Facebook, you know, us working collaboratively with our social media department and with South, with South Walton, we've been able to, you know, really take our content calendar and work together to, you know, do the best job in its performance of our, you know, media dollars with our Facebook ads. Broadcast. Recommending Fox Sports South, and this is something we've done in the past, but it's targeted to SEC football games and basketball games, and then as well is included is an ACC Florida State football game and basketball games, because Tallahassee is an important market for us. And then we have run-of, run-of-site golf and encore presentations as well. Merchandising, this is added value that I was able to garner that we can use for Sweepstakes giveaways, things we can do on Facebook to have people register to win and get tickets to these games. Radio, this would be in support of our signature events, and fighting throughout shoulder season to encourage visitation during this time period. Recommending, again, NPR spots in the following markets, and then thirty-second spots in key drive markets that we can have promotional tie-ins around, you know, to encourage people to come even more so. Added value to date is over four hundred and thirty-six thousand that I've been able to garner, but this is, you know, increasing as the plan is actually placed, so more to come on that. Media allocations, you can see that we prioritize based on our strategic plan to where interactive would be first, print second, and then TV, and then radio. These are allocations by media category, just more itemized, shown here in the chart. These are the media flow charts, first being print, and I think you all have copies of these as well in your packets, but you can see that we have co-op brand and then a combination of co-op and brand placements as well. Meetings, print, itemized, again, co-op brand, and then a combo as well. And then online TV and radio. Following, you know, contingent upon the approval of this plan, you know, we'll set up a time to have the co-op sales sheets completed, and then have them available to our partners, we'll open and close the windows, and then we'll start with the planning and placements of each, so that's it. You all have any questions?
A couple of questions.
Sure.
You know what our paper click is?
Mm-hmm. It's in there, it's in online.
I see it as a bulk item, but I was just curious what paper click is.
Paper click would be our, like, Google AdWords.
I understand it. What, how much is it?
Oh, how much is the total?
What is, what is the paper click? Do you know?
Um...
I know the total is ten thousand eight hundred and fifteen dollars a month, I was just curious as to what the per click cost is, I don't think we should know.
Oh, it's, it ranges from month to month, but it's been the lowest it has been, you know, in the past couple of months, it ranges, but for the most part, it could be, you know, fifty cents to ninety cents.
The only other question I have is, you got one hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars allocated to NPR.
Mm-hmm.
Correct me if I'm wrong, with the onset of Sirius Radio, XM Radio, all that, has NPR still have that strong impression that it had fifteen or twenty years ago? Is it still that strong today that we can allocate that kind of money?
I definitely think it's a great reach of our target audience, and it's quick messaging, and it's, NPR is different than traditional radio in that it's, it's not a traditional ad, it's, it's like a sponsorship ad, but it, it's hard to measure, because with Sirius Satellite and with, you know, advertising like on Pandora and other things, it's not as high of ratings, like the Sirius Satellite or with Pandora, there, Pandora specifically isn't as high of ratings, but Sirius is hard, because the advertising, there's not as, you know, the availability to advertise on satellite radio like there is traditional.
But NPR, you typically sponsor a segment, don't you?
Mm-hmm, yep.
Very similar to public TV?
Yes, it's public radio.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Anyone else?
Other questions?
I just want to say that I think it's a very balanced plan.
I agree too.
Between the segments, one of the more balanced that I've, I've seen.
Okay.
And, you know, the comprehensive approach, the cohesive nature between all mediums, I think is really there. Thank you for a lot of the placement that you have put in the shoulder season. Thank you for including Texas Monthly, that is a huge publication, I know it's very expensive, but, you know, it's extremely balanced, and I look forward to seeing the results. The only one thing that I would like to see a little bit more, when we're looking at our branding demographics, when we start to put our, you know, into a CRM type of relationship in our buckets, I think we've gone away from golf in our area. I would like to see us put more emphasis back. Golf as a vacation driver is back on the rise, that it was, had fallen off maybe five years ago.
Mm-hmm.
It's back, and we, I'd like to see us become even more dominant player within the golf market, because we certainly have the courses within South Walton and the fluency of a traveler that does travel for golf.
Right.
So I'd like, I'd like that to be a, something that we look forward to moving forward, in addition to the arts and culture.
Mm-hmm.
I'm thrilled to see that as part of the demographic, if we could add that, that bucket as well, I'd love to see that.
Definitely, and it's a... Definitely, and it's included in our pay-per-click advertising, you know, there's specific ad groups targeting those interested in golfing as well as our interactive placements, but from a print side, that's definitely something that we can look at going forward as well.
Thanks.
Do we advertise in any ecotourism magazines or any green magazines?
We have, we have done things with, I think, the Beaches Resorts and Parks Magazine that's distributed here as well as regionally on newsstands, but we've also looked at doing some interactive placements on like Walton County outdoors, but that is something that we do as well with our interactive placements around ecotourism, because that's very important to our content, our monthly content that we focus on.
Okay, thank you. Does anybody else have any questions? Does anyone in the audience want to comment or have any questions on this media plan? Okay, seen none, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yeah, you can, you can hang around in case you have questions, yeah.
I would just like to bring up one thing, and we're getting better at coordinating between the county commissioners, code enforcement, and the TDC. That connection is getting stronger all the time, but as there's more push on the shoulder season and we really need to make sure that code enforcement operates correctly during these shoulder seasons as well, we all need to work together to make sure that commercial events in residential areas are not encouraged. Setting up a false expectation for your tourists, setting up an expectation that you cannot meet to keep them happy. And actually, any commercial event that's allowed in a residential house steals dollars from the legitimate commercial operations in the county. So please push these commercial events into code-corrected locations and the county will actually make more money. Each residential house that allows those large commercial events is undercutting the dollar amounts that legitimate commercial establishments can charge. Please, everyone needs to look at how they can help these incorrect uses of residential to keep our tourist experience happier and healthier and expectations managed properly. Please think about your part in this mix. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, do we have, is there anything else, Mr. Irvin, that we want to talk about?
Just to clarify, two things. I'm not aware of any of the future applicants not being commercially based for events, which we're going to talk about next.
Okay.
And the other thing is for everybody's benefit, we talked so much about co-op and the media plan, but just in case folks don't know, the TDC would buy the full ad with bed tax dollars and then the co-op part is bed tax collectors could have a feature in that, typically it's just $500 to participate in that. So it's a really wonderful program and you saw that most of it, most of the opportunities were based in co-op, so that was something worth considering. And I think we were going to ask for a motion, is that right? To recommend the media plan?
We need a motion to adopt?
Yes.
Okay, so, we need a motion to adopt the presented media plans.
A motion to adopt.
Okay, there's a motion?
Second.
There's a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen and ladies. Okay, our next is Mr. Irvin with our event marketing grant evaluations.
Just a couple of things to set the reference, we did not vary all with the applications that came in, but this is, as we talk about it, this is the meat of it that was under review by your evaluators. So, this is event grants, which is a reimbursement program for marketing related to shoulder season, primarily shoulder season events, it's not exclusive. I'm sure it's obvious, we don't control who applies for these events, we only evaluate them to the best of our ability. The application is about 16 pages long and Clay, if we get in the mud, he can help us out because it's, of course, it's all based in state statute and ordinance. The funding is from the new product, Penny, that helps us, as we've talked, cultivate shoulder season. One of the worst things that probably happens is our casual language, we sometimes refer to these as sponsorships, they're really not sponsorships. If Chelco sponsors and gives an event money, they can rent porta-potties and buy food with it, you cannot do that with these. This is event marketing grants and it only can be for marketing placed outside of this region. So a lot goes into this, there's five evaluators that previewed all of this before you guys got your scores. Kelly, who's been on staff a long time, has done this many years. Myself, Roger Penn, who's the principal with Curly and Penn out of Orlando. Jennifer, who's in the audience from Baton Rouge with Zender. And Mike Rainey, who is from New Orleans, from Zender as well. So, everybody got a full copy of the submissions. And I think one thing that might be helpful, you're looking at a tally sheet probably, and the easiest thing to conclude is that, you know, one event compares to another. We did not rate events against each other. A, it'd be basically impossible to rate a modest beer festival against a 38 songwriters festival. Each one was taken independently. So when you look at the list, it's pretty easy to try to compare them, we didn't do that as a major practice. So, there was scoring in six categories for every application, you are seeing the total scores, but know that there were individual categories like strength of plan, dedication to shoulder season, soundness of project, and so an awful lot was looked at. I estimate there's almost 100 hours into evaluating this before you've gotten your sheets today. I think the last thing to keep in mind is that we have a budget that's proposed in front of you, also $425,000, and so it's quite a puzzle to make all of this work within the plan. And the last thing to know probably before, hopefully you have some questions, is there's two types of events. Experience events, which would typically be funded at $10,000 or less, and we certainly hope that they drive tourism, but that, they're not scored necessarily primarily on that, they can add to the culture and the appeal of being here as a visitor. Events that are funded at $10,000 or higher would be considered experience events and those have to create tourism and visitation. And one of their main tenets is a three-day event. So, as you're looking at the scores and trying to see the logic in it, I'll raise one example, there was an event that requested $50,000 that was a one-day event. Per the application, they wouldn't qualify for any more than $10,000 because of that limited visitation creation. So, a lot went into all that and I know you're looking at a lot of numbers, but we've been blessed over the years, shoulder season has grown two to one, and I think these events are a huge part of that and you've seen this budget grow over the years. And we're looking forward to some of these events that are in front of us. So I think you know that with questions and recommendation today, then it goes to the BCC, they get to make the same decision, then it has to be approved in the budget before anybody is told that they have the opportunity to get reimbursements. And lastly, for every single event, there's a memorandum of agreement that they have to enter into with the TDC that specifies what they're going to provide, what opportunity exists, where the marketing's going to go, so there's still a lot of work to be done. But if y'all have any questions, we'll do our best to answer it.
John, I studied this pretty hard over the weekend, and I want to compliment you guys, and I don't know who all these people are, but I think you did a great job on disseminating all this information and coming up with the recommendations. I think you guys did a great job. Looks good.
Thank you.
Yeah, is it in, anyone else, questions, comments on the board? Do you have any?
I've got a question. The South Walton Celebrity Golf Classic, how many years has that been in?
I think that it is...
It was 15 years since the Destin Celebrity Golf Classic, but it was always played at the same Destin golf courses and so when they came in and asked for...
Last year.
Last year, the 2012, 2013 year, when they came in and they asked for money, we, you know, discussed the fact that, myself, Walton, we cannot fund something that says the Destin Celebrity Golf Classic. They agreed to change their name. So this will be the 17th year as that actual organization, they just adjusted the name to replace South Walton rather than Destin.
And the appeal on that application is they annually secure Fox Sports, comes in and films the whole thing and then runs syndication, so you're seeing a full hour of content about enjoying South Walton, proper behavior now. And they also have a media plan which includes marketing and billboards and other things, but the Fox TV is pretty powerful return for us on that one.
Good, good, that's good. Thank you.
Okay. Does anyone in the audience have any questions or comments? Okay. Yes. Does Rick? Rick, do you have any? Okay. 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 So, what is the board's pleasure?
Next motion approved?
Okay, there's a motion to approve the plan. There's a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. We look forward to some of these events. Okay, the next item on the agenda is the application launch promotion campaign, or better known as the app campaign, as in iPhone apps.
Yes, anybody who's been involved now, I think it's two years, effort has gone into an app that celebrates everything in South Walton that visitors and locals for that matter enjoy. We are getting very close to the 2.0 version, being ready to hit the market. I will preface that anything that we're talking about is completely contingent on Apple putting it in their store. Nothing goes, nothing moves, nothing would be spent until that hurdle is crossed, which I think everybody's very confident that it'll occur this time. But with a great app, you've got to tell somebody about it, so we had a very limited approach in this year. We've talked, everything else we've talked about is next fiscal year, this is talking about current. So it's a two-step process. This peak season, we would spend some money in-market where tourists are so that they know that there's additional resource to consider doing additional spending, frankly, while they're here. And then in the fall, we would spend some money to introduce it into emerging markets, which this was one of the tools that we knew would be successful in sharing it into the Baltimores or the Chicagos or the places that we're trying to get to St. Louis. So, this is $50,000 request, it was not called out in the original budget and it was very close to $25,000 twice, which would have been an executive director's prerogative, but we felt it'd be better to come before you guys and show you that we wanted to support the launch of this app.
John, we used to go into Android too?
Yes, yes.
It just says subject to Apple approval.
Yeah, and Apples, and Applesworth, the control points are the toughest, the Droid market, we're confident, no issues there.
Yeah, because we approved back in previous meeting to move forward with this, so, you know, I totally support, we move forward with the app, let's move forward with the promotion of the app.
And then obviously in the next fiscal year, as we're doing digital work, you're going to use this tool to convert clicks and to convert attraction, so this year we did not have that spelled out.
Hey John, just so that I was clear, this money is already budgeted, you're just asking for the authorization for the approval?
The funds are available in this fiscal year, the first one, the 27, 250, would be realized savings essentially, is money that is already available. And then the additional emerging market would come out of the penny for emerging market at 22, 250, which there's a surplus that had not been line item in the previous budget, which is why we're trying to be transparent about it.
In other words, there is no budget amendment that needs to take place. You can authorize the approval without actually amending your prior budget.
How long do you think it takes? How long does it take Apple to review it and give you a yay or not?
I'd hate to say, I hope in two weeks is...
Sometimes it can be as fast as a week, sometimes it can be as long as three and a half, four. It really depends on what review you get and how the field the app works and functions.
Yeah, but close.
Okay, that's good. In the weeks then, it's not the months or such. Okay. Are there any other questions of, Mr. Irvin, is there any, are there any questions or comments from the audience on the applicant apps? Okay, then we probably need a, do we need a motion? We need a motion to approve the app marketing plan, I think.
Motion, second.
Motion is second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is the Beach Management Consultant RFQ and Mr. Sunday will address that.
This is the Beach Management Coastal Beach Nourishment Contract. In your packets, you'll see the results of the evaluation and review team. These are submissions to the ORQ for this service, for this contract. We had two submissions, one Tetra Tech and the other Sea Haven Consulting. The evaluation and review team reviewed these and came back with a recommendation to proceed with Sea Haven Consulting. And so what we would need is a recommendation from the council to move forward to the BCC to request to begin contract negotiations with Sea Haven Consulting.
Well, your motion would be a motion to accept the rankings and recommend and to begin negotiations with the top-ranked firm.
Right, that's the motion. Anybody have any questions or comments on that? You know, Sea Haven is Brad Pickwell, who we contracted with for, I think, many years, so probably just need a motion.
I'm back to motion. She was stated by Clay.
Okay, so move, okay. We have a second.
I have a second.
Second, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries and I guess we'll take that up at the BCC today, at the Board of County Commissioners meeting today. Next item on the agenda is, we have a presentation by Mr. Andy Alexander on an artificial reef project that he's put forth requesting some funding from the current budget, I believe. So, Mr. Alexander, Mr. M., would you please?
Mac Alexander.
That's good. That's good.
I made some copies of the permit application that Billy McKee has put forth on his NURDA plan. And we'll see the locations of the proposed sites and their distance from the pass to get to them. Also indicated on there fortunately is the, in the red hash marks, the location of the sands they're going to be using for the beach nourishment. And coming around the other direction is the proposal that we've been working on and why we feel that it creates a completely different opportunity in South Walton, it's something that we haven't seen in the past. Donna's going to plug in a quick little thing.
Did y'all, were there, oh, here they are. We're listening to some of these. Were there more of the...
Did that out print enough?
Were there more of these?
Should I get some, please?
Okay. Maybe we can, we can share if you have to. We can share.
The permits for patches for artificial reefs are a county project, it's not a, it's not an individual's opportunity to go out and pull a patch to create artificial reefs. Doing something in South Walton, since we don't have a pass, that gives access to the near-shore activities to create more opportunity, more draw for people to get off the beach and enjoy the water, that was our goal and objective and I think we've come through nicely with the good plan. And in the bay, there used to be a wonderful economic harvest of oysters. We've been doing some studies with the engineering firms locally, I've met with some of the folks with the... I've met with some of the folks with the CBA and the bay quality is restored to a point where substantial oyster production could occur. So looking at the projects that have occurred in Tampa Bay, in West Bay, and in Escambia Bay, the, we're, we're missing out on the opportunity to create not only a recreational habitat for oysters, trout, redfish, and other game activities there, but also the filtration. Oysters filter about 50 gallons of water a day per oyster. So you're looking at a major water quality improvement and that's what, that's what we're seeking to do with that aspect of the program. Here are some pictures that, and some things we've put together. The nearshore, are the nine nearshore patches are a half mile off the, off the beach, this is, back up Donna, I got picture of the thing. These, these are concrete and limestone tetrahedrons that have been designed over the last few decades to withstand movements and settling, tumping over, or even, even washing up. They don't, they don't move, they're large, they're anchored down to the ground, and if they do move, the company guarantees they'll replace them. So as you can see from the habitat that they create, by putting a Florida limestone casing on the outside, you promote almost instantaneous coral growth. And once the coral starts, the bait fish come and then the larger fish. With these a half mile to a mile off the beach, the thing about Walton County that's unique in the Gulf is we have the deepest nearshore water in the entire Gulf of Mexico. So going a half mile offshore here, you can be in 50, 60 feet of water, whereas in our neighboring counties, you have to go a mile or two. Most of the recreational paddleboard and kayak enthusiasts are uncomfortable proceeding more than a mile and a half off beach. I spoke to the lady at the, Lori Cryer from the Walton Outdoors, she won't go two miles, but she's more comfortable doing that than I am. So then there's nine of these patches and we've, we've identified through Taylor Engineering some, some sites that are not going to be in the way of the beach nourishment and that have the most use and access. And those are all, once again, public beaches, Topsail, Edwaleen, Blue Mountain, and down the list through, all the way to the inland beach launch, or inland beach access. The benefit that the University of Florida, a cost-benefit analysis they did revealed as a candle, the Northwest Florida region receives 131X of every dollar invested in the project. So the return on investment is significant and it's not, it's not an ongoing process. It's a, it's once we permit it, then we look to the other options to fund the implementation of the sites. And after that, it's just, it, it creates something for people to do off the beach and it also brings a whole new genre of tourists to the market in typical non, or non-typical tourist seasons. So spring, fall, when the fishing is better. Okaloosa has a tournament called the Okaloosa Rodeo over there, Destin Rodeo. It's a month long. Very easy to see something like that in South Walton. Say the month of September, we work together, pick a, pick a month where we, we could use a boost. There's, the Mexico Beach Association wrote a letter supporting the effort. They've been, been in business for 17 years. They turned the slowest weekend of their tourist season, the last weekend before Labor Day, into one on par with occupancy of the Fourth of July weekend by hosting a tournament on their artificial reefs that they've created. So here's another economic study that was done by Fish and Wildlife, University of Florida, NOAA, Sea Grant, on the economic impact in Southwest Florida. On the bottom left you can see the five counties in study with single digits in the opposition, both for non and reef users, and then extremely high support from the reef users. You look at it, $253 million in additional revenues that those reefs create for those counties, and they've created almost 2,600 jobs since they've been put in. So once again, that's further information supporting what we're trying to do here in South Walton. We, with the next slide, this shows a list of the, of the reefs in the, in the state. We are dead last, four. So Billy's applied for two more permits, that makes us six. So we're still lagging far behind, but the one thing about the proposed, or the patches that have recently been permitted, there's not going to be a beach use towards those reefs, they're too far offshore. You're going to have to have a boat from the pass or a beach launch off Grayton to assess them. That doesn't really fit, you know, with the tourism, the family-oriented aspect where on a nearshore, go to the next slide, to the, there's the oysters. These are the snorkel reefs, no, the next one. These are the snorkel reefs they've put down off of Escambia, right there. They straddle the second sandbar. And you can see on the next slide, instantaneously, when, before any coral growth, the fish start swarming around it. And then the next photo will show a year and a half in the water, you can see the coral growth on those, on those structures. It creates something for people to do besides just lay on the beaches. So going through the rest of the...
Are these guaranteed too?
Yes, sir.
Big, 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 or low?
Yes, sir. In Navar they've put in three, in Escambia they've two, Okaloosa has two in the permit process. And Reef Maker out of Orange Beach has, they've, they've done extensive amount of study, they've been through some big storms and they didn't even lose a rock. I mean, they're...
So these had lost, they had lost any of these, milkloose and sandbar?
No, sir. And Escambia County's had them in the longest and that's, in fact, the previous slide, the coral growth on that is a couple of years, two years old. But no, sir, they've been through Ivan, they've been through several storms and didn't have any, didn't have any issues at all. The, what this does, you can keep going, the, here are the, here are the tetrahedrons on their way out. Mexico Beach just did a deployment of 60 new reefs on the patches that they have out there, and this is the barge taking them out. And the crane that sets them, once they, there's a GPS pin on top of that crane, so as soon as it releases that, it marks, it marks the GPS location, which is then a public published PIN number for public reef, public use. You can't make a public reef and not publish the numbers. It's not going to be, I can't go out there and drop something and keep it to myself. It has to be a publicly empty. Here's a, here's, that's what we want to see. We want to see families on kayaks coming here and catching fish. I mean, just last, what, in June of last year, a friend of mine on a kayak caught a six-foot sailfish a mile off Grayton Beach. Brought it in, took a picture, sent it back out. Yes, sir?
Andy, on these, you said there's two locations or three locations in the bar?
Yes, sir.
Is it locations or are two?
Reef sites.
One reef. Is it one reef per location or one of those, those...
No, sir. And a typical deployment, go back Donna, right there, a typical deployment you'll see, that's the second sandbar on the hump. So if you have, imagine 55 to 60 of those pie plate stacks or pizza stacks, I call them. If you had 55 to 60 of those, you would probably want to put about 20% on the inside of the second bar for younger families, glass-bottomed kayaks, things of that nature to enjoy. And then you put the rest on the outside of the bar, get a little deeper water, get a little better fish schooling around them, you'll have spade fish, triggers, things of that nature.
So not just one, you got multiple?
Yes, sir. It's probably, that, those patches are about 100 feet wide and 400 feet long. And so you would have them dispersed out, there's no scouring action, there's no accumulation action around the base of the pylons. Like I said, they don't shift and they don't create any type of wave rip or type of buildup or abatement of a wave. It's no baffling system because they have to be underwater six feet from the mean low low according to the Coast Guard to approve. So not a chance you're going to go out there and tear the prop off your boat. So we'll go through the deployment of these. There's, one of the things the Mexico Beach Association sees a lot of is people making charitable contributions to the 501(c) that we've started here called the Walton Reef Association. The, and have a, they'll, they'll purchase one of these tetrahedrons and put a memorial plaque on it to a loved one or a cause of what, what their things. And you drop it down, it's a, it's a wonderful fundraising event to get more of the deployments out there on non-public dollars. There's somebody else's idea, they put an aluminum turtle on top of a grouper dome, a grouper box, and something about aluminum and fish go hand in hand, they really enjoy it. There's a picture of the grouper box. One thing we've seen a lot of pictures of and, or heard a lot about, they never got any pictures from the divers over in Mexico Beach, is finding baby turtles, they'll swim up underneath those grouper domes and take naps. And so then the big turtles come along and of course they forage all over them and use the, they get up under them and, you know, wedge themselves and they don't float away, I guess, when they're sleeping. But, you know, so the turtles, they could, another, another area did this artificial reef, put these, I've had, hired an architect to put these underwater photos on there. Their tourism and skin diving revenues have gone up, I think, 2X since the implementation of this art gallery on this sunken treasure ship. So just some of the interesting things that are going on in other parts of the state. Here's a picture, once again, of what, so the audience can see, the two reef sites are, are the purple and pink Xs. One of them's two and a half miles offshore and the other one's four and a half miles offshore. This one's 16 miles from the pass and this one's 11 and a half from the pass. As you can see, our neighbors, they've got quite a few. We've got, not very many. So that's a preliminary location layout that we've done, taking into consideration where the beach nourishment's going to be and where the most used and accessible public beach access points are. I drove it again yesterday and snorkel reefs, the Miramar Beach site, it's fantastic, plenty of parking, great bathrooms, the Topsail State Park, Grayton State Park, and inland beach access, those are all equally spaced throughout the county. And then the nine sites that we had shown here all have a range of two to three miles apart. So once again, we have equal use, we're not favoring any side of the, of the South County and they're located, I think, in the, in the best places, but that will be remaining to see once we get into the engineering process, studying what the bottoms like.
These are in on this shoot? Not on that, the, the purple and the blue?
Go back to the street.
Are they in now?
No, sir. Those permits were just applied for, then...
Is that through Billy?
Yes, sir. Those are the two Billy, those are...
Those are offshore.
Yes, sir, those are offshore.
They're not like this.
They're mutually...
You can't list if you nerd up funding on those, so they would allow for the permits.
Is Billy, is Billy McKee, or is he here?
Ma'am?
Is Billy McKee here? Is he here? No, okay.
The only, on page two of that page that you have of Billy's package, I didn't put that slide, or may page, yeah, you'll see that. There, the base, the only similarity between the two projects is on the, the way the Coast Guard and the, and the NOAA and all the people that you have to go through to get these patches, it's a 40-acre spot on the ground. In that 40 acres you can build nine reefs and those reefs can vary in size from 100 to 200 feet square, whichever. And inside those, you can put the tetrahedrons and grouper boxes and these other things. So when you think of permitting nine sites, you're really permitting 81 different opportunities, having the opportunity for any entity to come in and create a charitable...
Can I ask you a question?
Yes, sir.
I saw Okaloosa County had 181, Bay County had 220, and we have four.
Yes, sir.
Would this be nine more or one more?
That is going to be...
It's got nine reefs in the 40.
That will be nine more per, yes, sir.
So we would, that, that way they have four plus nine reefs, the way they're counted.
The way, well, the way they're counting is by deployment. So if you have, if, if we were to deploy 200 of these things in, in clusters of five, we would have 40 new reefs.
I get you.
So that's, you know, it adds...
This would be one reef, this 40 acres?
That's one patch, but nine reefs.
With nine reefs, okay.
Yes, sir. And in that you can probably put 30 to 50 of the different structures, depending on the size, the way the engineers draw it out.
Okay, so you, you reduced the number, because originally I think we had, you had 18, was that?
It's still 18 reefs, but there's, it's, there's five in the bay for the oysters.
Okay.
And that creates, and we've, we've identified some existing sites where there are natural oyster bars.
Okay, the bay has, okay, the bay also has, okay, I see.
So five for the bay, four for the snorkel reefs, because those, those need to be off very well-used public beaches, and, or state parks.
And then the reef, the oyster reefs are, I see, there's, looks like there's three south of the, south of the bay and then there's two north of the bay?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
And that, one thing is they're, they're going to be a little deeper than, than the stuff that the CBA's doing, because we're not, they're more looking into erosion control and pollutant filtration from the runoff, is that correct, Tim?
That's probably, yeah.
And where we're, our situation is more for bay water quality, recreational habitat, and economic return.
Okay.
Andy, have you coordinated this with Brad Pickle and his company?
Yes, sir. I've been working with Taylor Engineering, who's partnered up with Brad Pickle on several projects. The overlay of where the sands are coming from is a product of that relationship. And where those dredge pipes are going, where the beach is, we're, you know, we certainly don't want to permit something that's going to be dry land. So...
So where the sand extraction sites that have been designated would not be interfered with?
No, sir. Not, not one of this. Nor, nor the pipeline where they're going to lay the pipes. They're going to dredge that sand from right there in that red checked area and just turn it throughout the beaches. So there'll be ample piping and we'll make certain we're not in the way. Mr. Velma?
It's Richard.
Yes, sorry.
In a request for funding here, it says in parentheses that it will be reimbursed from the Restore Act funding. Is that a fact or is that...
That's our hope.
That's our hope?
Yes, sir.
So in other words, you're asking for funding and then hoping that the Restore Act will reimburse us with that?
Correct, sir, yes, sir. And it takes about two years to get to where we need to be to begin a deployment. So with whatever monies would come, we'd just be sitting waiting until a patch is approved.
The way, the way that this is presented on paper is a little misleading to me because it's all dependent on Restore Act funding, which is not guaranteed, is what you're telling me.
For the permitting or for the deployment?
For all three.
Well, the permitting, the permitting is straightforward, there's nothing that we can pretty much do there. On the deployment side, in the next two years, we'll be seeking grants, we'll be seeking our own BP settlements, and we'll also be accepting charitable contributions. So if we were to only receive a third of the deployment, the numbers that I put in there are total deployment, that's to fill everything up.
I understand that. My, my concern is that you put in parentheses that will be reimbursed, reimbursed from Restore Act funding, that's a supposition at this point.
Correct.
That's, that's not a fact, that is a hope.
Yes, sir.
Okay, I needed that clarified. Secondly, I believe it was in either Friday or Saturday's paper, the Daily News, that three or four of the counties, Bay County, Okaloosa County, Walton County, are getting BP funds for artificial reefs.
Correct.
Have you been in contact with the commission? It seems to me that, don't get me wrong, I'm not behind, I'm not trying to begrudge you or do anything here other than to clarify something, is that we're here listening to this presentation and at the same time we're reading in the paper that the county's getting money to do the same thing.
Yeah, the county's money is coming from NURDA and it is for the two reefs that are miles, you know, miles and miles away.
Okay.
And that money is going to, I think, three or four counties and Walton happened to be...
One of them.
One of them. And that's, that's for those two. And of course, these are much closer to shore, so that, excuse me, that's the difference. I think in his, and I have talked to, we've talked about this before and gone over some things and I think you met with Stan and...
I have met with the other commissioners, we're four of the five as well, Richard.
Okay, good. Let me ask you...
Just one other question to add to what you just said, the two, the two that Walton County is putting into the NURDA money, why are they so far offshore?
That's a good question. I don't really know how that all came to fruition because it was, it happened, you know, back when the former commission was there and they put certain things on a list. But that's a good question. I don't, I don't really know the answer to that. Does anybody know the answer to why the NURDA...
Well, I think that 90% of your reefs there are fish for boats to come out of the pass or charter fishing. They're out a little bit of water because they create more.
Is that true?
Matt Trammell from Taylor Engineering.
Oh, man, I'm sorry, I don't have any glasses.
That's correct. We've, we've been the ones working with Walton County on these, of the offshore fishing reefs, and that was the direction from, from Billy and the county. He had, he had spoken with a number of folks, a number of stakeholders, and the request was they wanted offshore reefs for the local fishermen. They did not want, the future phases we would look at perhaps nearshore reefs for kayakers and nearshore reefs for snorkelers, but this first step was for the offshore fishermen.
And I add in a Matt might be able to touch on, as you saw on the paper, a number of other counties submitted similar proposals. The prior board made the determination to submit their reef proposals to be more in line with what the other counties did, so it could possibly be funded as a regional approach to receive more, or a more highly-ranked proposal through the state of Florida, which is why they did that. I believe one of our issues was identifying sites. I believe one of our issues was identifying sites. You can look at the first map there and see that one of the issues that we did, Billy had to work with Brad, was to make sure we stayed out of our possible moro zones for beach or nourishment. So, that was one of the issues, so I think that's one reason why we cut back. The original proposal, Matt, was that I think we'd looked at trying to do four or five, but we'd settled on two sites that we thought could get permitted, if I'm not mistaken.
That's correct, and a number of factors played into that. Oaklusa and Walton had considered a partnership on using some repurposed material from Agilent Air Force Base. Future phases were to, you know, there's a lot of reefs right there, even on the Oaklusa-Walton line, but the focus this time was, let's really get something over toward Walton, let's get something in the central area, and something that's accessible to these boaters that launch from Grayton.
Okay, thank you, thank you. Richard, are you, do you have any other questions?
No, I don't.
I have a question, Andy. When you say here, I noticed on here, you said during the permitting phase, that you were asking Walton County to support, for support in filing the permit applications with the Army Corps and the DEP. What kind of support are you talking about?
Once the sites have been established through the diving and the sonar, and the things that you have to do to confirm to the different government agencies that it's not gonna affect any natural living bottom, those permit patches, those forty acre patches are a permit that's pulled in the name of the county. So, we'd submit the data, and the county would approve those locations, and then, and then they would, they would go in, we would walk them through, just like anything else. We would walk it through, but it would be in conjunction. The indemnification from liability of the county is the reason why Florida has gone to, forcing counties to pull the permits, as opposed to, say, Andy McAlexander going out there and...
Yeah, okay, so the county would need to sign off on the fact that...
Absolutely.
We would have to sign online for the permits.
Well, yes, ma'am, and that, and that brings us all together on the same page.
Right, exactly.
Andy, one other question, if I may. You list yourself, are you listed now as a 501(c)(3)?
We made the filings with the state, yes, sir, and we are provisional, I guess, until the IRS approves the tax, the general...
So, the fact that you stay here, that you are one, you're not yet...
We've filed, yes, sir, it's not been...
One of the concerns that I had was that if the board decides that we're gonna fund something like this, that there has to be some transparency, and stating that you're a 501 and, or applying for one, I think there has to be some transparency in seeing what that looks like, what kind of expenses are there, what, I mean, you're not doing this for nothing, and I don't fault you.
No, presently, I am. And I don't look to, I don't look for it as to be a, to be some source of grand revenue at all. I'm more interested in getting some, doing something positive. It's all started out of seeking what's gonna happen with the Restore Act fund, but through that, there's so much more that can be done to create here in Walton County an opportunity that doesn't exist. As far as the transparency of the thing, a 501(c)(3), all of our expenses, all of our budgets, all of our documents are online, and they will stay there, they have to be. In order to be tax exempt, we have to, we have to have that, you can't...
I think that's an important thing that I want to see if the board approves that we have that transparency.
Do you have a board?
Yes, sir, we do have a board, seven members. They recognize most of them, Neil O'Connell, the engineer from Regional Utilities, Patrick Murphy, VP of Operations for St. Joe, Bobby Johnson, who's a local, Cindy Stenberg from the association, myself, Jim Richard, and Don Roberts. So, the seven of us, we've, we had our organizational meeting last week, and we're up and running.
You know, and over the years, being in the hospitality industry, I look for entertainment for people to come to Walton's beaches, and they can come to the beach, rent a movie, and go out and, otherwise, they're gonna...
Shop, they can shop.
If they come to Bay County, they'll shop, and if the shop is coming in and play, I didn't mean to leak y'all out. But, they go to Oaklusa or Bay County, spend the night, come off the beach. Anything we can do to help bring people here, put heads in bed, I applaud your efforts, I think it's great, any way that I think the county could get behind you and help your efforts. One thing that I see here, that I would like to bring to the board's attention, if we can't fund them all, we can start somewhere, and start a pilot program. I mean, I just, I think this kind of stuff's real good, and what really, the key to me is that they'll, if the storms wash the reef away, they'll come and replace it. How long does that guarantee last, or does the reef that lasts forever?
The reef is guaranteed, not guaranteed, the reef is, they're looking at twenty-year histories on these things.
That's correct. So, they'll be one there for twenty years?
Yes, sir, unless something completely unforeseeable happens, I mean, I can't...
Have you looked at how strong the companies that build some minutes, like...
Yes, sir.
They're gonna be here for twenty years?
That's my opinion, yes, sir. They are employed from Louisiana to past Appalachia Cola deploying these things, they've got them all the way over north of Clearwater. So, pretty much all of the reef associations and FWC looks to this company as their go-to, not only because they're the most equitably priced, but they're also the best in the business.
I mean, I have to understand, we only build when the bill's coming, you know, it's paddleboard and kayak, but it's good stuff, you know, we don't want the go-karts and the usual parts on thirty-eight. I don't think they have, everyone has said that over the years, I just think this is something that I would love to see as a sport.
Clay, can I ask a question?
Sure.
No, 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 go ahead, go ahead.
This Restore Act is probably a little cloudy for some of us, at least it is for me, is it limited to certain funding of only certain things? I know in the past, we as a council have talked about...
It is.
We're the only county in the panel that's had a fishing pier.
It is, it's, but there's so many different pots, that there's the local pot, which has different components, in which you can spend it on the economy, on restoration of the natural resources and that kind of thing, and then there's gonna be the federal money that comes, and then there's the regional money that's gonna come. So, this would fit in to probably all three of them, wouldn't you think?
My opinion is, it probably would be available under all three. I've also, I've talked to Andy before, I also believe this project would actually be eligible for a NERDA submittal, because NERDA is not just, yes, it is natural resources, that's what it is, it's a natural resource damage assessment, but a large component that's weighted very heavily is loss of use and replacement of loss of use. And loss of use can mean, what can we put to get people to come back and use our beaches, because they were deprived of that opportunity from the oil spill? So, I think this would fall into there as well, so I think there are probably two separate BP funding mechanisms on top of any individual suit they may have against BP. If he says he's filed or made some form of claims, we're gonna do a private settlement. So, I think you have a number of options available there.
A lot of the people that come here want to get on the water, and they have to go to Oaklusa, Bay County, to a commercial marine, we'd just be great if we could open this gateway up and...
I just wanna echo what I was saying, I really like so many aspects of this, I like the fact that it's environmentally sound, as far as, you know, our continuing to focus on ecotourism. I think we pick a path, and then have a tendency to not continue down the road, investing in that path consistently, and I think that this speaks to that. And I think the most underutilized asset we have is that bay. There are people, driving tourists, I mean, run down to Appalachia and see what's in their bay on a big Saturday in the summer, and, you know, so I think there's a lot of reasons that we need to figure out a way to, you know, like you said, even if it's pilot, even if we can't do as much. But one of the questions I have, Andy, is Phase One, engineering and permitting, what are the chances we wouldn't get permitted? I mean, I think for me, that kind of expenditure, I just wanna understand, okay, we make that expenditure, what is the risk we won't make it to the other side?
In the seminar that I went to, where you, basically, there's about eighteen different of these books that give you the parameters and the guidelines. Taylor Engineering, fortunately, has permitted a great many of these things in Oaklusa as well, their success ratio is seriously high. One thing that was made very clear to me by the core and the other entities at some of these seminars, was when you submit a package for a thing, if you submit one reef, two reefs, or eighteen, that's gonna be picked up when it's picked up, reviewed by that person, and approved or dismissed. The probability of success of bundling was recommended to me by them, so it says, figure out what you can, you guys wanna do, and go for it, because the likelihood of getting three approved this time, and then three next year, and three more the following year, is gonna be, is gonna be more cumbersome, plus the time period that it takes. It takes a year and a half to get these permits. So, we can talk about all the BP money coming here until it blew in the face, but until there's a permitted patch on the bottom of the seafloor, you can't put a penny out there. And so, having the opportunity and having the dispersion like we have gives, it's not weighted towards one side of the county. You can bring, you can bring charitable, or let's see, corporate or individual donations to the 501 to fund the implementation of these things in a greater, in a greater reach than just having them isolated. The usage, the stakeholder usage becomes countywide.
How do Mexico Beach fund there, you know?
Through charity, and TDC, and BP, they do, they started in ninety-seven doing the exact same thing.
You don't need reefs, they have...
They have a hundred, what is it, a hundred and thirty-five?
Forty-three.
They have a hundred and forty-three public, and then they partnered with FWC and put thirty-five study reefs in it. So, they've put out a hundred and eighty in seventeen years. And then they, and then that tournament that they have is their major economic draw.
The challenge for us would be to build a planned kayak tournament on one of these, and then not be run.
Well, that's what we were looking at, I haven't stopped on this for seven months, and I have, you know, the best weather, as a farmer, I can tell you the best weather around here is April and September, and you start, your north winds, except for today, your north winds are pretty much over by the mid, late April, and so, obviously, with a north wind, you're gonna be slick calm out there. Our envision was to have a month-long kayak paddleboard fishing tournament that brings in, it's not just a one weekend thing where you bump everybody's, everybody's revenue for that weekend. We do a month-long thing, where we pull in, there's a kayak fishing tournament getting ready to happen over in Dolphin Island, they're projecting it to be the largest on the Gulf, they're gonna have probably close to two hundred kayak paddleboarders. The one over in, the one over in Jacksonville has four hundred a year, I think it's one of the largest in the state. But, once again, they're one day, one day, one weekend deals. If we have a, we have a month-long tournament, even if it's not a fish kill, even if it's not snapper season, you can still take the fish out of water, take a picture of it next to the yardstick, and it's, you can have, you can have a winner by length. So, seasonality, I mean, the snapper season's forty days long, but if, and if, how many tourists would come here additionally if they could hop on their kayak, paddle out a half mile, catch two snapper, bring them back in, or snorkeling, or spearfishing? You know, I mean, they're just, it creates an opportunity for a different genre of tourists.
Okay, so Andy, so what you're, what you're asking for is, for, I think we're asking for an amendment to this year's budget, correct?
Yes, sir.
To amend the budget to include the three ninety-four, eight forty, I think that's, that's the request, and I guess, that's, you know, what does the board wanna do on that? It'll go to the BCC as well, and the BCC is very interested in what they're calling shovel-ready projects, and the projects that, that, you know, are permitted, and this would be one of the few that, you know, that we're going forward within permits. So, I mean, I think the board's reception of this might be good, so it's, you know, what do we wanna recommend here as a, as the TDC advisory board, as far as amending the budget and putting this money in it this year, so they could go ahead and start the permitting? I guess that's the, that's the question.
One question, for those two other reefs, that's already, I guess Billy's already submitted, did the TDC, my understanding, is the TDC fund that for the permitting at this point?
No, no, that was a county...
That's a county?
Yeah, that was a county-funded permitted program that's been ongoing for, I think, about a year, maybe a year, yeah, yeah. So...
I just have one more question.
Yes.
Does the Restore funding allow reimbursement of money spent?
Yes.
It does?
That's...
It does. NERDA could foreseeably do that also, however, what we've seen is, as far as the difference between NERDA and Restore, NERDA's generally looked at, if you fund money upfront, that you look at that as a contribution you're making towards that project that they're not willing to pay back, is what they've done in other counties. Restore does have the ability to allow full reimbursement. Quite frankly, Restore's pretty much an open question about how the monies are gonna get dispersed. The best thing we can say about Restore is, that it is most likely going to be project-based. In other words, Walton County's not gonna get a check for two million, twenty million, two hundred million dollars, go do with it what you want. It's gonna be, what projects do you have, and let's fund, or let's pay towards those, and so, there is the ability to seek reimbursement for those, and I know other counties have taken those steps as well.
The way the argument is, the whole field of reefs, reefs are a high percentage of what they approve of, I think.
Well, Restore's a...
They seem to like reefs, they seem to like, that's one of those things they seem to like.
They funded, they gave a million and a half dollars to South Florida for a reef project last year in Calhoun County.
Yeah, so, a lot of these things are tied in, and will be kinda handed out by DEP and the State Department, so we've found that it's, you know, things that they like and approve of is the thing that seems to be getting around, wouldn't you say that?
I do think that Restore has some opportunities now, we wanna pursue it.
Is that in the form of a motion?
Michelle, come up, and what would be possible for Michelle, maybe come up and talk about where we might envision these funds coming from, and our current budget?
Yes, please, Michelle, could you come up and...
And while she's doing that, depending on what action the board takes, I've got a couple of comments, depending on if the board does move to move forward to make sure that we're doing this in accordance with the statute, so that we can present the board accounting commissioners the appropriate thing, but I withhold my comments to let the board determine what action you're gonna take.
Our request to amend the budget for this year would come out of unanticipated earned revenue, which we have, because our penny's making so much more than we projected, so we would be able to utilize those funds to funds.
What, are we at thirty percent, or what?
Twenty-one percent currently.
Twenty-one percent.
Do you, I mean, not drunk on this fight, I mean, I have, do you have a general idea what the unanticipated earned revenue is, just a...
Not this early in the year.
But it's twenty-one percent.
Currently, though, twenty-one percent, twenty-one percent over what we projected about.
Thank you, Michelle.
Our motion wouldn't be to decide now that we're gonna spend the three hundred and ninety thousand, we're gonna make them make a recommendation to the board accounting commissioners to make that decision.
Your recommendation would be to amend your budget to authorize the expenditure of the money for the permitting process. It really is outside of this board's authority to even make the recommendation to the board accounting commissioners to go forward with the whole project or not. I mean, I think it's implicit in your statement.
Well, I'd like your motion to amend the budget, to reflect what you just said.
You got that.
Okay, so, there's a motion to amend the budget to include the three ninety-four, eight forty, three ninety-four, eight forty, for the purpose of the permitting for the reef project. Is there a second?
I'll say it.
There's a motion, and there's a second.
Okay, now, if I could make some of those comments. One, Mr. Andrews, for the record, I assume that your motion is conditional on the fact that you believe, based off what's been presented here by Mr. McAlexander, that the creation of these reefs would in fact serve to promote tourism in Walton County, the state of Florida, et cetera, and is that implicit in your second?
We believe they will, because, I mean, he gave us some examples, the Mexico Beach tournament made documents in August, just like fourth of July, he said.
My opinion to this council is that you have been presented evidence that you could base a legislative finding on. The Attorney General's Office back in nineteen ninety-seven issued an Attorney General opinion on the funding of artificial reefs through TDC dollars. They said it can be funded under one of two sections of the statute. One is if it promotes tourism within the state, or the region in which it's being used. The other is in counties less than six hundred thousand people, if it qualifies as a nature center. In that case, they said that while there's a serious question about whether or not the reef itself is a nature center, a subsequent part of the plan that the county was looking at moving forward and tying into a private venture and a fellow private partnership may have created as a nature center. Based off what we've been presented, and without having any idea of any centers to go along with this, I would feel more comfortable if you base your decision on the promotion of tourism aspect. The board accounting commissioners will need to make a legislative finding of that, but if we're taking it to them, your motion's implicit in that we believe it would promote tourism, that's gonna be what requires us to do it under the statute. So, that would be the first question, I think we now have that on the record. The second question, just for the board's consideration, and is probably for Commissioner Meadows as much, and I'd be glad to speak with Mr. Davis, the county attorney on this issue, is, is the... issue, is, is the TDC will need to be mindful, should Amy's point here about if the permits do not get approved, or let's assume the permits are approved, and then the money never comes forward, the county chooses not to go forward. At some point, somewhere down the line, we as a TDC council may have to look at, did we spend money on something to promote tourism that never happened? In which case, an audit someday may say, that money should've really been paid for by Walton County. So, that's something the Board may have to look, look to. And I was about to get to your comment, I heard you making it when the second was made about they would request it be refunded from the Restore dollars to the TDC. I would think that would probably be a part of your motion, if you're willing to so amend that motion in that second, did you ask the county that the TDC be repaid dollar for dollar from any Restore funding the county receives? If that's how it's been presented, how you wanna proceed, I would make that part of your motion upfront, and that way, we can then take up the issue if it ever does not go forward, what the TDC's gonna have to look to. The Board of County Commissioners, by their action of 90, they approved this, is committing the funds, and the bottom line is, it's gonna be an accounting issue where it's most appropriately paid from, should it not go forward as a project. But I want the Board to be aware that there is that chance that we as a TDC are gonna have to talk with the County Commissioner about who actually pays that money, or we reimburse it with the county in, let's say, five years, if Restore gets swept up into another pot of money and Walton County doesn't save the money for this. But would you be willing to amend your motion to that, Mr. Andrews?
Yes.
Yeah, and make it any Restore fund, so that it doesn't specifically have to be from-
I would say, any monies obtained from BP either through, I'd make it as well as to say, any Restore funds or NERDA funds. The loss of revenue funds might be a little more restrictive in the county's claims, let's say those for right now, but the TDC has its own claim money there anyway that we could look to, so let's say that, if you're making, so is that an amendment?
Yes.
Do you amend your second? Thank you.
Okay, so, there's a-
Sorry about that.
You're saying all that, I think that's not feeling good right now.
Yeah, okay. Go ahead, there's a motion.
I would urge you, when you go to the Commissioners, to maybe talk about, Richard was bringing up transparency, maybe somebody from their county engineers can be on your board, or someone from the county on your board, so you have the transparency, and there's no question, or somebody that could-
Yeah, we could certainly assign someone to, I don't know if we could be on their board, could we?
We'd have to ask them. I would think, this is probably outside the TDC jurisdiction, I'm gonna make a recommendation generally based off what I've heard, and like I said, you and I have spoken about this before, that depending on what sources of funding they pursue, through Restore, through NERDA, that if there is a partnership between his entity and the county to do that, that might be the appropriate time to consider. That does bring up one other point, and I would simply ask, doesn't need to be part of the motion, I don't believe, unless the Board has a problem with this. You said you have filed your paperwork with the state of Florida, is that correct? I wouldn't-
Subject to you getting the question.
Well, not just the 501(c)(3), I won't, the statute says that we can fund an issue that is a private, I mean, and the way the Attorney General phrased it was, if we let them build sports stadiums that are artificial structures, we can let you build an artificial reef. It has to be a not-for-profit corporation, I know the statute uses that antiquated term, they call them nonprofits now.
It's a not-for-profit, yes, sir.
So, but that's what we'll need, is something to confirm it is a not-for-profit. Obviously, this is gonna be open to the public, but we will need that documentation submitted before that expenditure is made. It doesn't need to be part of your motion, but we're gonna have to have something that shows you're filing the state as a not-for-profit. The 501(c)(3), you can make a condition, that does not actually have to be part of the statute, but the not-for-profit registration does.
I can bring that paperwork to the BCC meeting tonight when I appear.
That'd be perfect.
Okay, that would be good.
That authorized it.
So, there's a motion, there's a second. Y'all wanna go?
Again, my apologies.
All in favor, say aye, aye, opposed. Okay, motion carries. Thank you, Mr. McAlexander.
Thank you, Mr. Andrews.
Thank you, very much. Okay, see you this afternoon, okay. Okay, there is a, the next item is an information item for Mr. Sunday.
In your package, you have some information from our research firm, DPA, and it's just some findings based on Visit South Walton's, VisitSouthWalton.com's website satisfaction results, and we put it in your packet, and for your review, just to see the satisfaction rates and usability, if you want, as to bring it back as a presentation in June, we'll certainly be willing to do that. It's also on the website.
And it's definitely on the website. It's a good, it's a really good study. I would encourage people to take a look at it, tells, it gives you some very good data on how the website's doing, as far as getting visitors and such. Does anybody on the Board wanna have this presented in a, at the next meeting, as far as a presentation?
I think if we have it, we can read it.
Okay, okay, okay. So, that being said, the next item is public comments. We'll take public comments at the time. Does anyone have comments they would like to make? Okay, I don't see anybody. There she goes, okay, yes, come forward, and if you will, state your name for the record.
My name's Ginger Sinton, and I have a product that I think you'd be interested in to promote tourism for Walton County. Can you introduce me into a couple of these? I have been working on this book for about a past year and a half. It's on the rare coastal dune lakes, these geological treasures that we have here. I think my book will help to promote tourism, particularly probably ecotourism, 'cause it's more about the environment than it is increasing the numbers. As, it just came off the presses this week, and as people looked at it, I had it out at Art's Quest, and everyone said, oh, the TDC needs to see this. It's like a promo piece for Walton County. So, I just wanted to let you see it and see, this is not a formal request for funding, but if I could work with you, or if you'd like to work with me. I wrote it, I mean, I started out doing the research about a year ago for my master's program in writing. My background is in marketing and photography, but I have a passion for the lakes and for the area, and I think it's something that you guys could use. I don't know exactly how, you know, you might wanna buy some or help me on the next printing. I only printed 1,000 this time, 'cause I did all the funding myself.
And where are they available? Where can we buy them?
They're available at the bookstores on 38, Sun Dog has them, and Hidden Land, and some other shops. Thank you.
You could meet with Mr. Irvin at the TDC, and y'all could get together and stand if you wanna be in on that, or whoever wants to be in on that. We thank you, it's a beautiful book.
It definitely enhances and supports the brand that I know we wanna put out there.
Very much.
It does, thank you very much. And John, if you'll get with her, and we'll take it from there.
We can bring it back in another meeting if they decide to use it.
Thank you very much. And are you giving these to us?
I'm just teasing.
I'm teasing.
That was funny.
Was that funny? You know, usually when you enter something into record, it's ours, we keep it.
It absolutely is yours.
Just one quick comment on that.
Sure.
On your behalf, you can get a list of all the tax collectors, and they're number one, number one sitting here, but you may be interested, I'd be interested in having that in my office and try to sell them for you to visitors in my lobby. And I could think of a lot of places, and sell them down, that could be outlets for you, so that's just a suggestion to get the word out for you.
And if you published it yourself, and, you know, you're asking for funds or something, they can figure all that out. I mean, we could, we could talk about that.
Okay, good.
If you only have 1,000. Gus said that he would be glad to front you.
Thank you.
Okay, so, okay, yes, yes. Okay, thank you so much. Okay, anyone else have any comments? Yes, Mr. Miller.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Art Miller, it's the Fisher, mentioned, and I had the opportunity at her request to look at the budget, and I wanna commend Mr. Sunday, and Michelle, and John for the cooperation in having us look at that budget. We made a recommendation to Commissioner Meadows on the budget, and I was pleasantly surprised at the work that had gone into it, and the thoroughness with which they went about their job. I just wanna make two brief comments, in addition to the report that we gave to Commissioner Meadows. Couple of things that occurred to me as I sat here this morning listening to the presentations. One, as we're impressed with the previous comments about the reef and how that can enrich our community by investing in such a project, but it also occurs to me, in looking at the media plan, that we should also consider, I would urge you as a Board to consider focusing more of the content, or the creative, as they call it, the creative message of our advertising toward non-beach activities.
Non-what, I'm sorry?
Non-beach activities. Meaning, not that there's anything wrong with our beaches, they're fabulous, and I can add, having been to Cancun a couple of weeks ago, I appreciate our beaches even more. I hate walking on gravel, I'd much rather walk on the beaches of South Walton. But the point being that with things like, we're putting over a million and a half dollars in this budget that you just approved, or that you just recommended, into hiking and biking trails. That ought to be part of the message to the community out there. People come here, not necessarily to go to the beach, but to take advantage of the great biking and hiking opportunities we'll have, and they'll be even better once this funding is put into it. So, that's about a 25% increase, as I recall from looking at the budget. And so, that, I think, ought to be included as part of the media message to people that are considering coming to Walton Beach. The other, and this is kind of a reach, and I don't pretend I have done any kind of detailed research on this, but having moved here some years ago from the Woodlands in Texas, for those of you that are familiar with the Woodlands in Texas, you know that they have a great pavilion there, the Cynthia Woods Mitchell Pavilion. And I happened to look at the website the other day, and I was amazed to find that they have about 100 events a year. That means it basically goes year-round, about two events a week. And when I say events, they arrange anything from a Barry Manilow, to a Brad Paisley, to a, to an opera, you name it, various kinds of entertainment that they put on there. So, on an average, about twice a week, they have, they have 15, 20,000 people going to the Woodlands Pavilion, and of course, spending their money on nearby restaurants and so forth. My point being that, as we look forward, we don't wanna just attract more people to the beaches, but we wanna have shoulder-season attractions, year-round attractions, and one of the things that I would urge you to consider would be something along the lines of a pavilion. I'm not saying we should build an auditorium or a $20 million facility to house entertainment, but I would suggest we look at something akin to what they have in the Woodlands, and I would urge you to, go to their website, it's www woodlandcenter.org, woodlandcenter.org, and, or just look up Cynthia Woods Mitchell Pavilion in the Woodlands, Texas. Something along those lines, I think, would go a long way. And the reason I'm mentioning this, by the way, is over the last couple of months, as Mr. Atkinson knows, we have been working on an economic development study for the EDA here in Walton County. And so, we are looking for, as Commissioner Meadows mentioned, shovel-ready projects. This isn't necessarily a shovel-ready project, but it's something that I would urge you to think about going forward. There's a great opportunity, I think, in this community that we're in, to attract people via the entertainment, that is, to get people here because of the entertainment factor. And so, those two suggestions I would make, consider using some of your advertising dollars to focus on non-beach activities, and secondly, take a look down the road, this may be a couple of years down the road, but take a look at the possibility of a pavilion somewhere in this South Walton area. And I wanna thank you again for the opportunity to do the budget review for, to help.
Thank you, thank you, thank you very much. Okay, any other comments from the audience? Anybody else? Okay. We'll need a motion to adjourn.
She'll move.
All in favor? Aye. Okay, next meeting is June 11th at 9:00 at a place to be determined by some of us.